Okay, everybody is coming into the meeting now.
Hey, welcome, good evening. We will now call to order the regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. And may we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Benz.
Here.
Trustee Akas.
Present.
Trustee Hines.
Present.
Trustee LaFrench.
Present.
And Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present.
Thank you, a quorum has been established, the time is 5:31 PM. And we will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item two, adoption of the agenda. 2.01, proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business, do we have any?
Madam President, we do. We are going to be pulling item 13.02, approval of schedule for regular board meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, one other. We're going to pull for discussion. Item. Was on. I'm looking for unotted actuals.
It's on the consent.
11.06.
Yeah, we're just going to pull it just for discussion and still vote on it after discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with those adjustments, we'll move to item 2.02, adoption of the agenda, do I have a motion?
I motion that we adopt the agenda minus the two items that were pulled for discussion and also pull from the agenda.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Akas, my second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Aye.
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Trustee LaFrench. Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
A motion carries 5:0. Item three, closed session declarations, 3.01, declaration of closed session items. 3.02, closed session. Discuss the RFP process for hiring legal counsel for the board. 3.03, government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal, release, appointment, reassignment, resignation. Item four, public testimony before closed session. Do we have anyone, Chris?
Yes, we have one individual, Jennifer Radar, and I can unmute her when you are ready.
Okay, thank you. We're ready.
Jennifer, you're unmuted, we're ready when you want.
All right, thank you. Let me find my documents. I have to shrink my screen here, hold on a second, I'm sorry. Meeting is huge. I guess I could find it on my phone, hold on, I'm sorry, just one second, please. Okay. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, I would just like to comment on the state of our schools while the students are absent from the classrooms. I've spoken with many teachers and some say their custodial staff is completely aces, while others say there leaves something to be desired, to say the least. However, some of our schools are, in a word, filthy. Cleanliness and sanitation needs to be the highest priority as we work toward returning to our schools with students in attendance. I know some teachers are zooming from the classroom and of course admin and support staff are there, but I think this quieter time on campus would be a great time for our custodians and groundskeepers to do a really good cleaning of the schools. Power wash the buildings of the years accumulated dust and grime, repair holes and cracks in the playground, finally get that sour milk smell out of the cafeteria, and clean up the weeds and the cracks of the pavement. Instead, our sad deserted buildings are looking even more rundown and dilapidated as weeds grow and litter blows. Especially now that the campus is deserted, it's a great opportunity to really give the schools a brand new feel so that returning students get that shiny take care of your school feeling. Let me disclose by saying the cleanliness of our schools is a really serious problem, but now with COVID, it truly becomes a matter of life and death. Please use the leadership you've been given to see these issues through to a better result. Our students deserve a clean school and we deserve a clean place to work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Chris?
Yes, that is the last one we have for today.
Thank you. So our next item, item five, recess to closed session, 5.01. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Akas, my motion.
I'm on. Recycle, recess to closed session, to take up items 2.01, now where is it? The stated agenda, I can't see it on my screen.
3, 3.01 to 3.03.
Okay, great.
Akas, my second.
We have a motion by Trustee Turner, second by Trustee Akas, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries 5:0. We're now recessed to closed session, the time is. Can you give me the time?
5:31.
5:38.
Okay, 5:38 PM, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is everyone back?
Yes, I believe we have everybody back now.
Thank you. So, item six, where we're going to call to order, reconvene open session or procedural business. We have the roll call, please?
Trustee Benz.
Benz, here.
Trustee Akas. Trustee Hines.
Present.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present.
Thank you. Quorum is established, the time is, could you give me the time, Zee?
7:03.
7:03 PM, thank you. Item seven, our closed session report, we, the board took no reportable actions during closed session. And we'll move forward to item eight, public testimony. Do we have anyone, Chris?
We have nobody for open session, public comment.
Okay, so. We will move forward with item nine, public hearings and sunshine proposals. Let's see, there's none for this evening. Item 10, adoption of the minutes.
Madam President, I believe 9:02, public hearing for the learning.
9:02, public hearing for the learning continuity and attendance plan. That was. Do we have a presentation?
No presentation, Madam President.
Okay. Item 10, adoption of the minutes.
No, you need to open it.
I need to open.
Oh, we need to open this, sorry, I'm just having the one that's going straight down, I don't have the. Okay.
Hines, could you read what this is for transparency, in case no one else could see that?
Okay. One moment, let's see if I can get that for me. Only have the list, I'm sorry, hold on.
I'm happy to read it.
Thank you.
No problem. So Senate Bill 98 establishes a learning continuity and attendance plan, which is intended to balance the needs of all stakeholders, including educators, parents, students, and community members, while streamlining meaningful stakeholder engagement and condensing several pre-existing plans analysis. This is Adelanto Elementary School District's public hearing of the learning continuity and attendance plan. The learning continuity plan replaces the L cap for the 2020-21 school year and supersedes the requirements in Executive Order N 56-20. This plan is intended to memorialize the planning process that was already underway for the 2021 school year. All LEAs, which includes School District, County Offices of Education, and charter schools, are required to complete the constant, the learning continuity plan, student achievement impact. The programs and supports that are outlined in the learning continuity and attendance plan will describe the actions the LEA will take to offer classroom-based instruction whenever possible, particularly for students who have experienced significant learning loss due to school closures in the 1920 school year or at the, or, or are at a greater risk of experiencing learning loss due to future school closures. Fiscal impact and funding source. The learning continuity and attendance, attendance, plan identifies expenditures associated with each action identifies increased or improved services to officers, including foster youth, English learners, or low-income students. Recommendation, the superintendent recommends the board trustees hold a public hearing for the proposed learning continuity plan for the 2021 fiscal year prior to adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, so we will open. At, could I have the time, Zee?
7:06.
7:06 PM. Is there any discussion?
Yes. This is Ms. Akas, I did, I had a question and then a comment. Where, this is being proposed, the learning community and attendance plan for the 2021 fiscal year prior to adoption, but I noticed in it, there's a lot of TBDs, that's to be determined when it comes to money. That kind of concerns me, I know we're not there yet, but it is kind of worrisome for a trustee not to know what a lot of this is going to end up costing. So I'm assuming that will be brought back later when you do have the amount of what things are going to cost and we will approve at that time, is that my understanding?
That's correct, Trustee Akas, we will, the plan is, 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 is a working document. And so we are in the midst of having stakeholder engagement meetings, getting feedback from our schools, our site leaders, our teachers, classified staff, and our parents and our students. When we approve, adopt the plan, we'll not only have all the amounts completed, but will, I will also provide an executive summary of the, the plan, as well as what the executive summary of the line, item costs. These dollars will be paid out of supplemental concentration, L cap rent funds, which I don't want to say doesn't impact the general fund, but, but are designated for, only for increased improved services, as well as to mitigate the learning loss of students due to COVID.
Okay, so it's just considered a fluid document and will, or plan. And as we proceed, then we'll know more about what we're spending and what we're doing and if anything's going to change, and we'll just be updated at that time as we move forward, am I correct?
That's correct, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, appreciate the question.
Dr. Mitchell, I do have a question, on the learning continuity and attendance plan, you're saying it will be funded out of the COVID funds, am I correct on that?
Some of it will, but most of, this identifies our supplemental and concentration portion of, of, of dollars. And so yes, a combination of both now.
Okay, so will we use that money first before we go into any other funds? Am I correct on that?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have a huge bulk of money that should be spent by December 31. We are constantly, we're, we're currently spending those dollars down. I've said this before, it is, will not be, will not, we will not be sending any of these dollars back. We'll make, make full use of the dollars that have been afforded to us in this time crisis.
And could you give us a, could you give us an amount of those dollars again? What were, what was allocated to Adelanto School District? The amount of those funds?
So, Ms. Turner, I'll have that in front of me, I'd be happy to get back, get back to you on that.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
We have two that requested to speak, I've checked the meeting twice now and I don't have them in there, but if we want to allow another individual, if they want to press the yes sign, and I can unmute them.
Yeah, let's do that, Chris.
As of yet, we don't have anybody that's requested.
Here's a public hearing, I'm happy with waiting another minute or so, President Hines, if that's okay.
Yes, we will.
While we're waiting, Dr. Mitchell, do you know approximately when you'll start having a parent engagement? Do you know when we'll be having those meetings?
We've already, we've already started them and I think I've asked Ms., is he need to, to tell the board when that's happening, Dr. Williams, could you, could you brief us on, or any upcoming parent engagement meetings as relates to the L cap?
Sure, happy to, good evening, board. We had a parent meeting on September 2nd, that was for the public. We also livestreamed that on YouTube. On September the 3rd, we met with all of AESD staff that wanted to give input. On this coming Friday, we're meeting with our D-LAC parents at 1:00 PM. On September 17th, we're meeting with our special ed parents. And we will be walking them through the document and asking for their input. And we've had several parent advisory meetings prior to this, at least two other meetings.
Okay.
To get their input.
Okay. So on that, we're also having another community advisory committee meeting on September 17th, that's what's in the document.
Yes, that is for our special ed, that is for our special ed parents.
Oh, the special ed parents, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, and so President Hines, free to continue at your discretion.
Okay, no one else has checked in, Chris?
We have no requests at this moment.
So at this time, we will close the public hearing period and the time is.
President, the time is 7:12 PM.
Thank you, 7:12 PM. So. Moving forward, item 10, adoption of the minutes, 10 point. I would need a motion to approve the board minutes as written and order filled, regular board meeting of August 25th, 2020.
Motion, I'm sorry, Akas, my motion to approve.
Okay, and is there a second?
Trustee Turner, I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, motion carries 5:0. Item in our consent agenda. Item 11.06 was pulled for discussion. Item 11.01 through 11.10. Minus item 11.06, could we get a motion to approve?
I'd like to pull.
Okay, is it, is there anyone else that wants to pull it, which one would that be, Ms. Akas?
Yes, I'd like to pull 11.04 and 11.05.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I would need a motion to approve minus 11.04, 11.05, and 11.06. Do you have a motion?
I motion, I motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would like them, 11.06, I know that.
Oh, we.
Dr. Mitchell mentioned that he was pulling this for a discussion, however, this report, I want more than, I want, you know, I want you to talk about this, not just.
Yes.
I want you to talk about, this is the unotted actuals and this should be on a, on a report. This should be in a separate agenda item by itself. So it never should have been on the consent agenda, so it's going to be more than just a board discussion. I want a semi-brief presentation on this.
Yes, we, we're ready, we're ready to do that, Ms. Turner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, but we can.
Right now.
Go through the other pulled items before we begin.
Yes, please.
So we have the motion from Trustee Akas and a second by Trustee Turner. There's no discussion, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akas.
Akas, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion 5:0. We will move to item 11.04, Trustee Akas.
Yes, I pulled this item and also 11.05 because they're both the same subject. What I was concerned about was that this, this consent agenda item has already been posted on EdJoin before board approval, and I was wondering, did something change? Did something happen? Because according to my knowledge, the board never approves anything or nothing's posted or done until the board gives its approval first. So I was just curious to know what, why that was posted before board approval.
This is a consent item, so how may I understand, Ms. Akas? So we're asking.
Yeah, to my knowledge, it's just common practice that a district, a board, a district, anybody, anything, nothing goes forward until the board has approved it. That's where I'm confused, the board didn't know anything about this, we weren't apprised to it, we had no information on it, but yet it's on EdJoin and it's, it's gone forward. If the board decided not to approve this agenda item, it would have to be retracted, it would have to be pulled from EdJoin.
Why, why do you believe it's on EdJoin? This is not a position. This is not.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to explain, I had somebody look at EdJoin today and they described this exact position on, on the website and they called me and asked me, they, if there was positions for people to work in our district in, in this manner, not being paid, it was like a volunteer type thing, and it confused me. I thought, since when do we do volunteer employment or, or whatever on EdJoin? So that's what got my attention, then when I looked at our agenda. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, a second.
Okay, so when I looked at our agenda, I put two and two together and I thought, okay, this is, I don't understand this. If there is something on EdJoin, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you go to EdJoin, you will see something about a position on there that says that we are looking for, what's the right wording? We're, we're looking for volunteers who want to be counselors in our district with no pay. And unless they, you know, read it to me wrong on EdJoin, that's what questioned me when I saw this on the agenda and I thought, why is that on EdJoin? And why is it there before the board approved it? So if somebody can look on EdJoin maybe right now and investigate it, maybe during the board meeting, maybe we can get clarification on that in case I misunderstood.
Dr. Williams, could you, could you talk to us about this MOU we're asking for consent, please?
Sure, Dr. Mitchell, we currently have three other MOUs which has been approved by the board and that's what positions are currently posted on EdJoin. We're asking for tonight to approve these additional ones so that we can expand our offerings. The particular ones that are on EdJoin have been there for approximately a year. So we're hoping that the board would approve these two additional MOUs to be able to expand our current offerings.
Oh, okay, so this was something that was already in existence and that's why it's already on EdJoin and that we're adding two new, new, I don't know, colleges or groups that are going to now join this? Is that my understanding? Because I couldn't understand why it was on EdJoin.
You're absolutely correct, Trustee Akas.
Okay, so it, it's already been approved, it was, I just misunderstood that it's already been there and we're re-advertising it because we're also now bringing up two new schools or colleges that are now, we're looking, they want to be in agreement with us and work with us, am I correct?
That is correct, we currently have MOUs with USC, Cal State San Bernardino. So those positions have been on the website for approximately one year. So the advertisement is continuing so that we may continue to expand our offerings to our students in the district through the use of interns.
Okay, I understand now, yeah, I didn't quite understand the connection. I guess I've never seen or heard of it on EdJoin, we just always did MOUs with colleges, just, you know, directly. I, I just honestly don't ever remember seeing it on EdJoin. So that's where the confusion came in, but I understand now, so thank you.
You're very welcome, Trustee Akas.
Okay, I have a question on that too, I have to agree with Trustee Akas. I know that we've always had interns, but I don't ever remember seeing it on EdJoin, so could someone explain?
Well, Ed.
Go ahead.
EdJoin, EdJoin allows us to advertise for those folks out there who are working on their credential, who would like to have an intern position. This is one of the ways that we're able to reach those in the field who would like to participate in this type of program, to get experience and, and complete their practicum hours as they are preparing to complete their credential.
Now, I've always been under the impression that we went through universities to get the interns. So, so what you're saying basically is this is just open wide, open, opened up wide, not just the universities? Is that what you're saying?
It's to anyone that is attending that particular university so that they are aware. This is a way of creating a greater awareness, we know that everyone that's looking for a job in California, they're using the EdJoin as an opportunity to look for those positions. So in order to get more people interested in serving and working with our students, this is an avenue that we're taking to draw more people to our district who are under the MOU with the current universities we're working with.
Oh, okay, that's what I want to hear, the current universities that were approved for us to work with.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Williams.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we would need a motion to approve 11.04 and 11.05.
Separately, Madam President.
Pardon me?
Separately, Madam President.
Oh, okay, so 11.0.
Okay, yes, Akas, I motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Any further discussion?
You know, can I just make a quick comment? Again, like I said, I was notified by the public about this, this job situation and they were laymen and they thought it was an opportunity for them to work in our district to get experience in counseling. So personally, to be honest with you, I did not look at it myself, I'm going off what I heard. And maybe the district can look at it and make sure it's worded properly so that people don't get the wrong impression when they look at it, the way it's listed on EdJoin. Because if they got that impression that it was for just laymen to come in and get free experience in counseling, you may want to kind of maybe make it more specific that it is for people in school or who, you know, meet the requirements. Other than that, that's all I wanted to say on that.
Thank you.
It's good feedback, Ms. Akas, we're happy to, we're happy to look into that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, any further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Ekis?
I.
Trustee Hines?
I.
Trustee LaFrench?
I.
Trustee Turner?
I, trustee Turner, I.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, we'll need a motion for eleven point zero five to approve.
Ekis, by motion, approve.
Is there a second?
Benz, I sec, sec, second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Ekis?
Ekis, I.
Trustee Hines?
Hines, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, we'll move on to item eleven point zero six, business services, unaudited, uh, unaudited actuels for the fiscal year.
Thank you, President, President, I, and, uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Turner, uh, for, for, uh, bringing it up. You're absolutely correct, it should have been an action item, uh, we're actually, uh, happy to, uh, provide some explanation um, around the unaudited actuels and what acts are, uh, are a brand-new, uh, assistant superintendent of business service, Mr. Kraus, if you can provide that overview, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, good evening and thank you, Dr. Mitchell, good evening, members of the board, members of the community that are with us this evening, so as Dr. Mitchell stated, I wanna give a brief summary of the unaudited actuels. So what are the unaudited actuels? Well, this is a snapshot that tells us how we ended the fiscal year, in this case, the nineteen twenty fiscal year. So in the agenda, you will see a summary report, talks about the background, and this gives us an idea of how we, how many, uh, how much in revenue we received and how much in expenditures we spent in the nineteen twenty year. And what that then does is give us a new ending fund balance which carries over and becomes the new beginning balance uh, for the new fiscal year, which starts July first of every year. So as you can read in the report, it talks about a lot of things that have changed since March. You may recall in March, early March, the second interim report was presented to the board, and aft, right after that, the COVID nineteen pandemic hit. Uh, many of us weren't prepared for what would come next. It really affected the state revenues, in the state, it affected the federal revenues. So when Governor Newsom came out with the May revise in May, it really looked devastating for many districts, including our district, as far as our revenues are concerned for this current fiscal year. But then there was some discussions amongst the, uh, state legislature, and they came up to an agreement with an adopted budget, which then restored the cut to the LCFF funding. So as we move forward into this new fiscal year, we are dealing with the, uh, funding restored, but COLA was the one thing that we usually rely on for our, uh, rise in expenditures that was not restored. So we're hoping that at some point that will come back to us. But as we move forward, part of the budget talked about what would, the federal government would do as far as the HEROES Act, because that would potentially backfill, uh, what the, uh, funding was that the state is promising districts now. So we're keeping an eye on that, but as we ended the fiscal year, we received a lot more COVID nineteen funding. And in this report, there is the, uh, early on, the local control funding formula, it talks about, uh, what our revenues are, as you can see on the pie chart there, that we receive a bulk of our revenues from the LCFF, from the state funding there. And then we receive other revenue from the federal government, some from the local, and then other state as well, makes up our total revenues of a hundred and two million, uh, for the nineteen twenty years we ended the year. And then when we look at our expenditures, you can see there that we, uh, the bulk of every district's expenditures are in salary and benefits, including ours, and so you can see there, the bulk of our expenditures of a hundred and three million are in salaries and benefits, and then we have a other category such as books and supplies, about two percent our services and other operating at eleven percent, uh, capital outlay and another outgoing. So as you can see, looking at the report, uh, there was some deficit spending, uh, that you can see we took in a total combined revenue of one oh two, six oh three, one oh four, but then our expenditures when we closed the year were at a hundred and three million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six. So this gave us a deficit spending of approximately two point two million. Looking back at the second interim, when we projected how we would end the nineteen twenty year, it was much higher deficit spending, about six point one million. So due to a lot of the savings when the schools shut down and the district shut down, uh, during the COVID nineteen back in March, uh, there were some realized savings that contributed to a lesser deficit spending in the nineteen twenty fiscal year. So again, our deficit spending was about two point two million, uh, down from what it was projected at second interim, about six point one million. And as we move forward, we are going to be looking at our COVID nineteen funds that, uh, we were talking about earlier to see if we can offset some of the expenditures we've already had, and then also look at, as we move forward, moving some expenditures in there, as Dr. Mitchell stated earlier, we have to spend that by December, the end of December this year. So we were already looking at that and will continue to do so. And then we're also going to be looking, uh, closely at our expenditures for the twenty twenty-one year and making sure that we're drilling down on how we're spending that and does it, uh, where we are, where we are spending it in the budget, and so making sure that we're matching our expenditures with our revenues as we move forward. So we're optimistic that we will close that gap of the deficit spending as we move forward in the twenty twenty-one year and the out years. Um, then you can see there, it talks about in the report, uh, summarizes that first interim in December will be the next opportunity to give the board and the community a snapshot of how the budget is, and that covers the period of July first to October thirty-first in this fiscal year. So that will give the board and committee an idea, how are we doing on our revenues? How are we doing on our expenditures? And, uh, just, uh, enable us to make adjustments if we need to as we move forward. Looking at the, uh, summary of the report as well, you can drill down into the numbers that shows the unrestricted and the restricted in those columns, and talks about how the, uh, combined totals are as far as the revenues are, and then the totals as far as the expenditures are in the main categories that we report on every year. And then at the very bottom, one thing I'd like to point out is the, uh, unrestricted fund balance. So as you see there, the, uh, fund balance is, was in eighteen nineteen about eighteen point one million, and then as we move forward, and that was about seventeen point eight percent of the reserve, and in nineteen twenty, we have about fifteen point nine million, and so that's about fifteen point four percent of the reserve. So we do have a healthy reserve as we move forward, and we want to continue that as well as look at our, uh, revenues and expenditures and maximize that to the best of our ability in order to maintain that healthy reserve as we move forward. And so with that, I, uh, am more than happy to, uh, take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Any question?
I would like to say, welcome, um, Mr. Kraus, you did, Kraus, you did an excellent job explaining this. Um, so now we know where we are, and, uh, thank you for the explanation, uh, especially on the deficit spending, because that was one of my, that's always been one of my major concerns, and I'm happy to show that, uh, I'm not happy for COVID, but happy for the funding, the funds that we got because of it, that, uh, you know, our expenditures are down there. Now, do you, do you anticipate that deficit spending will continue to decrease in the future?
So we are working with all of our stakeholders on what that will look like, including the federal government and the state government. Again, it's dependent upon what the federal government will do as far as funding is concerned. We could potentially see a reduction in revenues if the federal government does not backfill, uh, school districts in the state of California, but we're continuously monitoring what's going on at the federal level and at the state level out of Governor Newsom's office. So, uh, we are optimistic that we will continue to be able to reduce that, but, uh, again, it fluctuates depending on what's going on with our funding, uh, as we move forward.
Okay, now how would that, how would that affect our adopted budget that we adopted, um, on June thirtieth for the upcoming school year?
So that was a snapshot in time of the information we had at that point in time from out of Sacramento, and, and we are still awaiting what's going to happen again with, uh, the governor's office. He may change his prediction, predict, uh, projections on revenues in the state, depending on the tax revenues that come in, and he may again come back to school districts and change their revenues, and that would also change our revenues that we are projecting now, uh, with our adopted budget. So at some point, uh, we will definitely keep the board informed of, of when those changes occur and what we are hearing, um, but it will definitely potentially change our revenues, uh, one way or the other as we move forward.
Okay, one other question, now how will the HEROES Act funding, um, uh, affect our district?
So with all districts, what had happened is that it's like an IOU from the federal government to the states to say, if the state promises X amount of revenues to districts, then that's contingent upon the federal government backfilling or giving districts, uh, several billion dollars, in this case for the state of California, to backfill that promised revenue, because you may recall back in March, uh, the governor's office was about fifty-six billion in deficit from the tax revenues that they anticipated, and so their entire state budget was flipped upside down. So basically, he and the legislature are hoping that the federal government will come back and backfill a lot of that revenue that the state of California has lost due to, uh, businesses not being able to generate tax revenue and employees not able to, uh, have payroll taxes, things like that. So, uh, we're optimistic that something's going to be reached in the near future.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other?
Thank you, yeah, that was a good report, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so, um, moving forward, we need a a motion to approve.
Trustee Turner, a motion that we approve the thousand nineteen, twenty, unactual, unaudited actuels.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed.
I'm sorry, trustee LaFrench?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Ekis?
I.
Trustee Hines?
I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Thank you, motion carries five zero. It is approved. Uh, we'll move forward to item twelve, items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Item thirteen, new business, thirteen point oh one, executive cabinet position and amend employment agreements. Pardon me?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hines.
Thirteen oh one. New business.
So, so, so board, this is a, a proposal to, uh, change the names of our, uh, of our chiefs back to assistant superintendent, two rationale for this, one, uh, the, the word chief is not recognized in the education code, and so I, I'm, uh, I'm asking that we revert their, their titles back to assistant superintendent academic services, assistant superintendent human resources, and assistant superintendent business services. The other rationale is that it's not consistent with my title. Uh, in this model with chiefs, I would be the chief executive officer. Uh, as, as you know, of course, my title here is superintendent, so I'd like to realign their titles to, uh, to be consistent with my title, as well as my previous rationale for the, uh, chiefs not being recognized in the education code. The last and final one is that, uh, oftentimes, uh, chief does not denote that they're the, uh, they're the top officer in that division, in many places, the chief should report to an associate superintendent or deputy superintendent, and so, so that we want their title, uh, to, to denote that they are uh, the executive leader of that division, and I think that, um, the assistant sup, uh, communicates that a little bit more clear, so that's my rationale, thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Okay, so I will open it up for discussion, once we have a motion.
Okay, okay, this is Mrs. Ekis, my question is, uh, the fiscal impact and funding source, uh, the official impact to the general fund will be dependent on the action taken by the board? What exactly does that mean? The changing of these names, is it gonna cost money or?
No.
Uh, increase, um, uh, salary, uh, what, what is the reason for that?
No, there's no other change to their contracts but their titles, and so I apologize, I must have missed that, that, that language, and so, uh, my apologies to communicate any confusion here, the only thing we're changing about their existing contract is their title.
Okay, um, having said that, I am a little concerned because we are approving the wording that we see in front of us, and again, it, it seems kinda odd to me that it's written that way. Um, how will the board know for sure that this doesn't increase, um, a salary or add something, you know, um, money-wise to this new change?
Because their contracts are exactly the same, and, and I'm assuring you, the board, that, uh, there are no salary increases here in the contracts, and that there strictly is a, 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 uh, a title change, and so we're not having any impact to the, uh, to, to our district plan. And so their contracts, they're, they're exactly the same, um, and we, and I, I'm assuring you of that, Ms. Ekis.
Okay, um, honestly, I do think this is a great idea, and I agree with it, but that wording does concern me, cuz usually things aren't written like that, and it kinda makes me wonder now if there is some kind of financial gain or it's something, it's something to the change that would add more money or something to them.
If I, if I could recommend that the board, that the board, uh,
I don't.
A- amend, amend this, uh, action to, uh, to just to say that, uh, the board, the board, uh, approves the title change, uh, as, with the condition that there is no impact, uh, there's no financial increase to their contracts.
So I.
Okay, go ahead.
I would get a motion to clear that up, to, um, include that change there because I am holding the amendment to contract, uh, for the positions in, in question, and it is only the one page that is changing the term. And there's no financial, there's no, um, salaries or anything listed on this page, but I would need a, uh, um, a motion so we can have further discussion if we need to. Is there a motion?
Trustee Turner, a motion that we approve the changes of the, the chief business officer, chief academic officer, chief personnel officer back to assistant superintendent title on each position. Um, I also motion that there will be no financial impact in doing so.
Thank you.
Did you get a second, I'm sorry?
No, I'm, I'm waiting for a second.
Okay, I will second that under those conditions, yes.
Okay, and now we can go into further discussion if anyone has any further questions or discussion.
Yeah, just to, I, I was here a look, look, looking, and if you say on, see, see on, on the pay page here, it says that all of other terms and con, conditions of the con, con, contract and any prior amendments shall re, re, remain unchanged and in full force and effect. So I did take, take that as the pay and all the other stuff that's in the contract.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Ekis?
I.
Trustee Hines?
I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item thirteen point oh two, approval of schedule for a regular board meeting. Um, pardon me?
That item was pulled at the beginning.
Oh. Yes, I did see that, thank you. You, trustee Turner. Okay, so we'll move on to item fourteen, superintendent's report. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, thank you, board, just a couple items to report, I wanna congratulate, um, oh, hold on, real quick, pull this information up. Yeah, so I wanna congratulate Debbie Bowers, principal of our own West Creek Elementary. She was, uh, granted forty-five hundred dollars, uh, in a grant from, uh, Zen, you tell me who this was from again?
For.
Excuse me, uh, for Ms. For, Ms. Bowers?
Give me one second, let me go ahead and pull that up real quick, this is Office. Give me one second. Let me go ahead and pull that up real quick. This is Office Max.
Office Max.
For forty five hundred, uh, and they can spend the money online.
Excellent. And so board, they, they're, they want to take a picture with the, with the principal and, and board. With a big check if possible. And so we will be asking, is there any to reach out? Schedule if you'd like to be a part of that picture opportunity, uh, with, with Office Max in our school, uh, receiving those, those funds. So we want to congratulate, uh, Debbie and her team. So thank you.
Office Max.
Yeah, congratulations.
Good. Great. And so those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Mitchell, could I, could I ask you to give us a brief, uh, overview of how distant learning is going for the past week? Could you? Are you ready? Are you prepared to?
Well, I can, I can talk in general terms. Uh, what, what our principals are, are reporting is that, uh, the technology issues are settling down. That there is a, there is a clear routine in place across our schools and our families. Uh, that I, I was at four schools today and I, I see, uh, I'm not seeing the offices. Full of parents. I've only, I'm only seeing Wednesdays or Tuesdays. I had an opportunity to be at a school today and I'm so proud to see. Uh, that, uh, we had a technology staff, uh, working with a parent and a student and they were working through a, a Chromebook. I was at another school today and just happened to see a parent come in and say, hey, I'm here to pick up some kindergarten, uh. Materials and some, uh, work packet and the teachers were, teachers were handing out some work packets. And then I saw another parent today who came in and said, I can't get, she came right, right in when I was in the office and she said, hey. I can't get this, uh, the, the Chromebook to, to get all my wifi. And so we were able to fix that right away. So what I'm proud to say. To show, uh, to say is, um, well, the, the great customer level of customer service that I'm seeing across our schools. I'm seeing a regular routine, um, taking in with our families and schools. I'm, I've also been to schools today when we were doing, uh, the breakfast lunch pickup. And so our lines are full and packed. The kids are being fed, our, our classified staff are assisting. I'm coming in and they're taking my temperature. Asking me all the relevant questions. And so I'm happy to see that there is a sense of routine. And normalcy, um, back to our district even, uh, even in, in the midst of our crisis. And so. Um, I'm happy to give more detailed information in, in terms of attendance and, and, uh. Number of kids and the kinds of stuff we're seeing in the classrooms are, and also. Our, our administrators are, are in classrooms and observing great teaching that's happening across the border, our schools and. Principals are reporting great work that they're seeing. Well, our principals are also suggesting that. We've never seen this level of collaboration between our teachers, uh, the, the, and prior, I think that because it's something new. That, uh, teachers are just collaborating like never before. Just hey, this is a great resource. This is a great program. Have you tried this? Have you tried that? And so, uh, we're really, um, take getting the most benefit if, if, if that's possible to say out of this crisis. And so. I'm just happy to give that generalized report and can go into any level of detail that the board requires. And so. I'll, I'll, this week when I call you all, I'll just ask kind of what kinds of information would you like to see in our proposal of report, this more detail.
Thank you.
I, what I could tell you is right now during COVID and doing distant learning, I would like to get feedback on what the parents are saying, what, what the teachers are saying and. Uh, actually the principal, the professional development, how that's being, um. You know, spread out across our district, um, and the feedback that you're getting from that. Um, we're not able to, uh, go through walkthroughs, you know, like we used to, you know, as board members. You know, accustomed to doing. So we have to rely on you giving us that information back. Um, everything is, and, you know, feedback on teachers and anything that they particularly need. That, uh, they're not getting. I know that you mentioned, um. Well, well, we'll talk about that, but you know, some of the funds that will be going back to the school sites, the different school sites. We had a discussion on that. Are you prepared to talk about that?
Yeah, so yes, I, I gave you a report this week to describe, uh, the instructional initiative that we're undergoing right now, which. All of our schools are preparing a professional learning and collaboration plan, uh, in, 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 uh, coordination and collaboration with teachers. So the, the idea is this, is that each T, each school along with their teachers should establish. What's a professional learning folkai is, or that is, is what is it that teachers, uh, from their own words? And interest say is what, what they would like to learn to be able to do at a high level that they think would. Accelerate student performance and make the quality of distance education that much better. And so we've devised a, uh, a pro, a, uh, a planned development process over this. That we'll be implementing this entire month where, where principals will be working with their schools. To determine, um, the most impactful, uh, needs based, uh, professional learning and collaboration opportunities. That teachers are saying that they want to engage in, that they would, that they believe would improve their personal craft or individual. Um, their, their individual, uh, performance as well as their collective impact as a staff. And so. Uh, we're happy to lead that. Uh, we've been rolling it out for the last six weeks. We've involved. Our ADTA leadership and, um, they've been involved from day one. They've been, they participated in our principal meetings. Uh, which was, which was a new experience for both our principals and our ADTA leadership to be in the same meeting. I've also had private meetings with, uh, with both of our leaders from our unions as well as the executive board and our site. Reps, uh, to be involved in this process. And of course, there are still questions and concerns and considerations that we're continuing to have. And conversations that we're continuing to have. We'll continue to work these kinks out, but the, but the, uh, but one of the things that I can report that teachers have said, I've, I've taken surveys. From all of our meetings and have, um, very clear indicators of the overall, uh, acceptance and. Of, of this plan of action and its direction in which we. That the teachers are part of the decision-making process. As it relates to the professional learning opportunities and collaboration opportunities that they'd like to see on campuses. Our principals have widely embraced this in our learning process, just as teachers are learning, um, distance learning. And so. The whole idea is to define for ourselves what constitutes high quality distance learning. What kind of learning needs do teachers have to, um, to really implement a high qua- a high quality program? Um, and how can the district office support those efforts as well as support the efforts of our principals? And in doing so, I've, um, increased, I've asked staff to increase the, uh, the site allocation for supplemental concentration funds. From two hundred and seventy thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand in total for all of our schools. Uh, prior to this, increased schools were given a flat rate of twenty thousand for most of our schools. As well as ten thousand for some of our smaller schools, uh, to, to use for discretionary funds. I've, uh, asked staff to calculate it per people allocation of close to eighty three dollars. Per student, which, which, uh, in many cases doubled the, uh, the dollars available for schools to spend on. Technology resources, uh, peripheral equipment, um, intervention and acceleration for student supports. As well as, uh, extra duty hours for teachers to, um, collaborate with one another more, more often in after-school weekends if needed. Uh, as well as pay, pay for, uh, the professional development that comes about as a result of this plan. And so I don't, I don't believe giving, in giving unfunded mandates. And so we wanted to make sure that, uh, we, we, as often the state does, is give us unfunded mandates. But I wanted to make sure that we were pushing, uh, the dollars to the discretion of our principals along with the expectations. Of them leading and developing high quality professional learning plans alongside with, uh, in collaboration with their teachers. And so. Going to be able to give you more data on that, um, as we're going and, and we're just excited about the process. Our leaders have, uh, communicated their excitement about the process. That's why I've been out at schools. Just checking and keeping my ear to the ground to make sure that I'm, uh, we're, we're paying attention to, um, the feedback in the system. Feedback is so terribly, uh, important in these days and times. It's really hard to know. The impact of, 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 of the decisions that we're making in the district office without asking our teachers on how they're feeling, without asking. Our principals how they're doing and how they're managing. And so I spend a lot of time, I'm out at schools. Try to do four to six schools a week. And I always, uh, and, and, you know, and, uh, tell them I'm coming and just sit down with our principals for a few minutes. Just to get a good sense about how our team is doing. What more can we do to support their efforts? Uh, what clarity do they need? What barriers can I remove from their, from their way? And how can we help them to help, uh, teachers be more successful and effective with reaching all of our students and engaging all of our students? We believe that given the right environment, that our teachers can, uh. Given the ability to provide high quality education, that our students can exceed, um, their, their current levels of performance and meet. Uh, their, 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 uh, potential as young human beings. And so we're just excited about what the future holds. Uh, with this new pathway. And so thanks, want to thank the board for your support. Of, of this cabinet's leadership in that effort and we'll keep you posted as we're going.
One other thing, um, and then I'm done. Uh, I apologize. Um, I understand that we're opening, uh, we're rolling for the after-school program. Uh, could you give us some information on that?
Yes, I've, I've, um, I'm, I'm concerned as you are, board, about our declining in, in enrollment. Um, and so we've, I've asked, uh, Dr. Dr. Williams to re-engage and double up our efforts both, not only for our, um. For our, uh, after-school programs, but also enrollment in our independent study programs. We, we want to try to find the right model that fits each of our families. We, we know that this COVID has, has provided huge challenge to our working families. We want to be, uh, viewed as a partner with our families and, and find ways to be creative. Um, uh, around how we could help families provide solutions for both, uh, before, after-school care. Uh, nutrition as well. Uh, and then also for, for parents who are just working, uh, during the day during our distance learning hours and, and, and offering. Increased opportunities for our, for our kids, for our parents to utilize our independent study services. We believe we can compete very well with our competitors out there. Uh, we, we see them as partners. But we, 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 we can play in that area as well. And so, uh, we, we, we are tasking our, our new public information officer to help us. He, he's promised he's going to, uh, double our student enrollment in one year. And so we're. We're, we, we, we got great hopes for, for Mr. Quintero. And so, uh, and, 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 uh, he's working hard on that. He started today. And, um, and, uh, he's still at work now, trying to figure that out. I'm just kidding, we're, we're, we're happy to have him on board. We think he's going to add a lot of value to that effort. And we're, and we're thankful for, uh, Dr. Williams. And her staff, uh, for being creative and trying to, um, and boost our enrollment. But more importantly, it's not just an enrollment in dollars, although that's, that's hugely important for us. But what's more important is being responsive to needs.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Item fifteen, recessed a closed session if necessary. We will not be recessing. I'll move to item sixteen, governing board members' reports and announcements. Trustee Ben.
Um, wow, I've been on a chair all day in Zoom. So, and then here I am in Zoom again. I should be more prepared. Um. I just want to, you know, la- last time I talked here, I thanked the T, teachers and then afterwards I thought. I didn't thank the classified and how rude of me because. You know, they're go- going where their need needed. And I, uh, appre- appreciate that. Black flexibility that they're going in the dis- district where their need needed. And I appreciate that dead dedication to the dis- district. So. If I didn't say thank, thank you la- last time, I meant, meant it. And so I'm going to take this time. To thank you for all you, you've done as well as the T, teachers and, um. You know, we'll get through this and I can't wait till we all can get back into the class when it's safe. Cause I know our kids need, need it. And that's all I'm going to say because I really am like, phew, tired. So. Ev- everyone, please have, have a good, good, good night.
Thank you. Trustee love French?
I just want to thank everyone. I know that, um, I spoke about, you know, the school year getting off, we're getting off to a great start. Um, I want to thank, um, everyone for all that they have been doing. Um, I look at it that we are being successful. Um, I'm proud to be a part of this district. I know that, um, distance learning and COVID, all of that came out of nowhere. But I'm proud to say that, you know, today, you know, seeing the food being given away, seeing the teachers, seeing the classified, seeing everyone. I would really want to know a little bit about the cleaning of our schools, but I'll leave that for another time. Um, but I just want to say that I am proud of everything that everyone's doing. I was on a, um. A back to school. It was very thorough. It was very kind to hear, you know. Um, teachers saying that, you know, they go and stay as long as they're needed to stay, you know. Um, if it takes till two, three o'clock, they're still there for, you know, the children to help tutor them. It's very kind as a parent, you know, to know that, you know, that we have, um, teachers in our district that just doesn't stop at twelve thirty. Their willingness to, you know, continue to, um, sit with the children and to help them over beyond those, um, twelve thirty, one o'clock hours. I, I just appreciate where we're going. Um, this year. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Akas?
Yes, um, uh, again, uh, I always repeat this at every board meeting because it is a huge concern of mine. Not only can I relate to it, um, but the more I, I hear about it, the more disturbing it is to me. Um, I'm hearing very positive things about teachers using Zoom and the distance learning. But I'm also hearing some negative things and very sad things and experiences teachers are having. Um, it's, it's, it's very disturbing to me. Um, I don't know what the solution is other to eventually start opening our school. Um, I understand we have COVID. I understand we have lots of challenges. But there are children that really need to be, uh, well, parents, well, you have parents that need to go back to work. You also have children that need to be in a very, very safe school learning environment. Um, this is very crucial to some of the children in our district. Um, it's, it's, it's heartbreaking. Um, without getting into detail, I just really want us to start looking at that model and start, uh, going in that direction. For those students that really need to be in a very safe and, uh, loving environment. And I do believe that our schools do that for our children. I've experienced it. Um, I've witnessed it. I was involved in it when I used to work in the school kitchen many years ago. We have children where this is their home. This is their life. This is where they feel comfortable. And, um, it just, it, it's just going to have to happen eventually where we are here to nurture those children and keep them safe. And, um, just help them to just learn and grow. And we all know children can't learn and grow if their. Uh, environment or their learning is just not working for them where they're at or in their situation. So again, I, I just want to keep reiterating that eventually I do want to see our schools start opening. Maybe at a small capacity, maybe for people who only feel comfortable and keep doing distance learning for the others. But there's just some children that it's just not working for them and it will not work for them. And we need to really address those children so that we can educate and keep safe, you know, the whole child and all of them. So that's just a real burden on me as a board member to hear and see the things that, that I'm experiencing and, and it's just. It, it's really sad and overwhelming for me. So again, I just want to throw that out there, you know, it is what it is. But I just want people to be aware of that it's really not all working for everybody. There are some people that are being left behind and it's just, it's just not working. So, um, just a comment I wanted to throw out there and, you know, share my burden with you because it is really rough out there. Um, but other than that, I do want to thank everybody for doing what they're doing. Like I said, I have heard some very positive stories and experiences and it's exciting to hear that. So I'm glad it's working for some people and they're enjoying it and the kids are really excited about it. Um, I've heard several teachers have a hundred percent attendance. The children can't wait to start school every morning. They're excited. They're happy. Uh, their parents are getting involved with them and their learning. It's beautiful to hear those success stories. So, um, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, it is what it is. And like I said, I'm trying to stay positive, but when I do hear some negative, it really. Uh, affects me. So, um, just wanted to share that. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee Turner.
Okay, um, I would just like to, you know, piggyback on a lot of the things that the other trustees have mentioned about. Okay, um, I would just like to, you know, piggyback on a lot of the things that the other trustees have mentioned about, you know, working together. Um, I know we're in, uh, unprecedented times and, you know, we're learning together how to do this. You know, at the end of the day, it's about keeping everyone safe and our children educated. I know that distance learning doesn't work for everyone. But, and I know that there's a lot of challenges out there that parents are facing, teachers are facing. But, you know, I have to give you kudos. You're doing an outstanding job. Um, one thing that I can say is that we are keeping my, keeping our children alive and safe. By not bringing them back to school in an environment. Um, I was at, I was at, um, I drove around today looking at passing through a lot of our schools. And, you know, the lines of parents getting the lunches, I mean, the dinner, the breakfast, the lunch and the dinner. I was really, really amazed at what I saw and, and the job that our, our CNS staff was doing. They were very professional. They had, you know, their list set up and they know exactly who they were giving the, the food to. It was amazing. And when I say good food, I saw some great things being put in the back of cars. I saw fresh fruit. I saw fresh, uh, vegetables. I saw bags and bags of food. So I just want to give a shout out to our CNS department, you know, our, our teachers. I mean, every day you come to school not knowing what you're going to face. And we've never had to do this before. We're learning on the job. And, you know, we're learning on our feet. And I know after this is over, we're going to be able to do anything. We're going to be able to teach in any, any situation. And, you know, you guys, I, I can't, I can't give you more kudos than that. You know, I really appreciate what you do because, you know, as a grandparent, my kids are grown. But as a grandparent, my granddaughter is here every day. She stays with me and I peek in on her. And wow, she's working and I see the teachers talking and I see the class engaging. And it's just absolutely amazing. So, you know, kudos to you, kudos to the district office staff. I mean, putting it all together, um, you know, and, and just, we're going to get through this. I mean, it's a, it's a trying time for all of us, you know, to learn and, and stick together. And share ideas and share solutions and, you know, share sad stories and can't give hugs. But we can give virtual hugs and, you know, just reassure everyone. You know, to Michael and to Stefan, welcome aboard. I know today is your first day. Michael, you did a phenomenal job explaining, you know, our un- audit actuals, our, our un-audited actuals, actually, yes. So I, uh, give kudos to you, Dr. Williams, Dr. Mitchell. Um, Andrea Cudel, um, all of my fellow board members, Xenia, you're amazing. You know, you're always there for us. But Dr. Mitchell, you gave, uh, and you didn't have it ready, but your, your superintendent report was absolutely amazing. You know, and I know you didn't have that written, but you have it in your head. So I give you credit for that and it was great. So together we could do this and we can be that premier district in the high desert. In, in San Bernardino County. I, I know we can and I know we will because we are capable of it. And our kids are capable of great things because we have great teachers in front of them and we're going to make them even better. You know, so, um, you know, let's continue to work, help each other, motivate each other. And, uh, parents, if you are struggling in any way, if I have parents out there listening, if you are struggling. In any way with your children, please don't hesitate to contact the district. Contact the district. We will be there to help you in any way that we can. And refer you to the needed support that you need. You're not in this alone. You're not in this alone. We're here for you. So with that being said, that's all I have. And thank you, everyone. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And, um, I just concur with so much that has been shared already by my fellow trustees. I want to say thank you to everyone. Welcome new team members, new family members. And, um, we'll just keep moving forward together. And so at this point, item seventeen on our agenda, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Add to by a motion.
You have a second?
La French, I second.
Any further discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Benz.
Uh, Benz, aye.
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Thank you. Motion passed zero.
Good night, good night, everyone.
Good night. Eight P M.
I'm sorry, what was the time?
Eight, ten P M.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
Bye, bye, everyone.